Alright, with that I'd call to order the Fridley Public School Board meeting for April 16th. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone, beginning the meeting, we'll start with a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Delvo, seconded by Peredo to approve the agenda for April 16th. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next up would be a spotlight on recognition, beginning with the Employee of the Month for April. Dr. Heil.
Thank you, good evening Chair Riddle and school board members. This evening, we want to acknowledge the April Employee of the Month. Kasar Jama is such a gift to Fridley Community Center. She's a Community Ed Instructor One in our three-year-old preschool classroom. One of the teachers she works with describes her as caring, kind, respectful to students, parents, and coworkers. Another colleague describes her as a rock star employee, supportive coworker, and community bridger. She also takes great initiatives and is such a tremendous help to the students and staff around her. Every day she goes above and beyond her job title to make sure all who are around her are supported, accounted for, and appreciated. She has a deep understanding of students and their families, and she cares for our students as if they were her own. She takes extra time to show the three-year-olds they are important, and she exemplifies the IB learner profile. Families find her comforting because she has a great perspective. She is a Fridley parent, and she is always willing to assist if there is a language barrier. She is truly a bridge between the school and our community, and we are honored to work with her every day. And that was written by Dr. Jason Bodie, Principal of ALC.
Alright, congratulations, thank you. Next up, we have Superintendent and Staff Reports, and this month's report will be a Fridley Middle School presentation by Ms. Cochran and Ms. Peterson. And they don't even have to follow students and small children or animals, so they got it easy this month.
Well, good evening Board Chair Riddle, School Board Members, and Superintendent Heil, thanks for having us here today. We're excited to share some updates about the middle school. I'm Amy Cochran, the principal.
Danielle Peterson, Assistant Principal.
And we do have a few students with us that we'll introduce when we come, but we wanted to start, I have the clicker, we just wanted to start and give a few updates on some of the changes that we made. So I was here in the fall and presented many of the changes that we made at the middle school over this course of the school year. So just wanted to talk a little bit about how those changes are going and what successes we're seeing with that. And then just a few highlights of Fridley Middle School, and then we have a few students with us tonight that are going to be presenting on their History Day projects. So just to start off, one of the major changes we made this school year was to fifth grade. And if you remember, our fifth grade used to look very similar to a middle school where students passed, had passing time, they had multiple teachers in their day, and this year we moved that back to an elementary-style classroom. So students are with one teacher all day long. So some of the things that we have found as extreme successes, we have found this to be a fantastic change. Just that students are having that deeper relationship with their core teacher. And this year, they've really been able to focus on just becoming familiar with the middle school and not stressed out about having eight teachers in a day, having to worry about passing time. So it's really helped with that transition and just becoming familiar with the middle school. We've seen an increase in the structure, routines, procedures in the classrooms, really getting students familiar with the middle school. They've built a really strong sense of community within their classrooms. And a lot of positive feedback from both our middle school staff across the board, the fifth grade teachers themselves, and then both parents and students just saying how successful this has been this year. So we will definitely be continuing this model. With sixth grade, what we did then is made sixth grade kind of a half-step of middle school. Again, they passed on an eight-period day in the past, they, again, their schedule looked just like a typical middle school schedule. And what this looks like this year is that we have six, sixth-grade teachers, they work on teams of three. So students are working within their team, and so they have three core classes. And then there's an opportunity for them to all have a reading class, so they all receive that Focus Literacy, that intervention reading, or the enrichment reading kind of based on their level or what they need. We also built in time for recess this year, which in our schedule had never been in before. So for both fifth and sixth grade, that was something that we were able to build in right along lunch, which has been extremely successful also. Again, just fewer transitions in their days, really kind of giving them what is that half-step before we move into seventh and eighth grade and are kind of true middle schoolers. So we're really excited to see what this is going to look like now from fifth grade, coming from, you know, that elementary-style classroom now and kind of into this half-step for next year, since it'll be the first class kind of making that transition. And then how that helps our sixth graders when they do move into seventh grade next year. Something else that's been really exciting at the middle school this year is our win time, or what stands for What I Need Time, which happens in seventh and eighth grade. It happens two days a week, on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, for a 30-minute period. And essentially each week, teachers decide what they're going to teach. So they really get to share their passions with students, and then students get to choose what class they want to take. So students go in once a week, and they schedule themselves into their win time. So students have been very excited about kind of owning their own learning. It's an opportunity for both enrichment and academics, so it's a time for students to reassess during the school day, a time for them to get extra help if they need it. The enrichment options have been probably the most popular choices. Students love to be able to have that enrichment time during the school day. You know, where they're doing everything from friendship bracelets to, you can see four-square up there. They do, you know, creative writing, journaling, so it's just a wide range of whatever teachers are really passionate about and want to share with students. So it's been a really great time for teachers to connect with students and build relationships, and, you know, especially with students that they might not otherwise have in class, because it's open to, you know, them to select, the students to select what classes that they're in. Because of the changes in fifth and sixth grade and then our win time, our homeroom also changed for this year. So we moved homeroom, seventh and eighth grade is combined, and something that has been really successful is that we were able to get the numbers down to about 10 students per homeroom. So it's a really small structure in their homeroom classes. And then had the opportunity to make sure that we were doing restorative circles or community-building circles once a week. We have a drop everything and read day, so we want everybody to be independently reading. And then also an opportunity for us to do all of our SEL or teaching our Tiger Grit expectations during that homeroom time. So we have found that to be very successful because of the small class sizes in homeroom. Avid is not new for us, but one thing that is new this year with Avid is that we went to an Avid building-wide binder system. So students in sixth grade through eighth grade, every single student is using the binder system. And with that, it's really about teaching students organization. They have an opportunity to make sure they're using their planners. Teachers are very committed to doing binder checks throughout their classes, to making sure that students are cleaning out their binders, helping them stay organized. You know, they only have to be responsible for carrying one binder with them to all of their classes, and all of their materials are with them at all times. So that's been extremely successful. Fifth grade would like to implement it next year, so that again, when they come to the middle school, binders is what we do, fifth grade through eighth grade. Something else with Avid is we've been focusing on WICHER strategies, which is writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading strategies, which they're all Avid strategies. So even though we just have a few Avid elective classes, all classes are using the WICHER strategies to help kind of use those for instructional strategies, and that's been very successful. So we've been doing that in staff development, so that teachers can then use that and implement that building-wide. And then lastly, our behavior structure is brand-new this year. So we spent almost all school year last year with a group of teachers developing a new behavior system. And one thing that we did not previously have clearly defined is what behaviors were classroom-managed versus what things were office-managed. So this process really helped us define that. So it lays it out in the four quadrants of what things, you know, our students getting sent out of class for versus what things our teachers expected to be able to handle within the classroom. What we have seen is a huge decrease in our autoschool suspensions, that deans are available for more proactive support. They can ask for righteous support from the deans to come into their classrooms or help with behavior, and they're available to do that. And it also has really decreased the time that students are spending outside of the classroom from being sent out, because it's very clear and concise about what things are to be managed in the classroom versus which things are managed in the office. And then a very clear step of the things that are managed in the classroom, what are teachers to do or what support can we make sure that they have, so that they know how to manage those behaviors. Alright, and we're just going to share some highlights of kind of some things that have gone on this school year.
Barely taller than this podium here. So, you know, we've done quite a few academic engagement evenings. This is a picture from the sixth-grade Inventors Fair. We have a very successful E-all-night and Chinese Culture Day also throughout the school year, as well as both History Day and History Day Junior, which you get to see some of our kiddos talk to you about their History Day projects as well. And then just highlighting the arts, just our many, many band concerts, choir concerts, and both our fifth and sixth-grade play, which was Space Pirates, as well as our seventh and eighth-grade play, which was Dorothy and Wonderland. This is a picture from our most recent seventh and eighth-grade play, Dorothy and Wonderland. They're so fun to go watch them. And then assemblies, we've done quite a few assemblies this school year, some for Tiger Grit. We did one in the beginning of the school year, really as our kickoff. I think this picture was from in the beginning of the school year, they were playing Hungry Hungry Hippos on the scooters. It is so fun. I know we did another one, and teachers were racing students, being like wrapped in toilet paper, so that was really cool. This week, we completed our MCA pep fest, where we talked with students about just expectations and kind of getting them pumped up for MCA testing. We also recently did a staff-first-student basketball game, which was hilarious, very, very fun. Students were super-engaged, had a really great time, already asking for the next staff-first-student event. So we'll see what that'll be, and then...
Who won? What was the result?
Everybody won.
Staff won. Students were realizing that they maybe weren't always putting up points for staff, but they still won. But it was really fun, so. And then our annual Veterans Day program as well. And then History Day, so every single eighth-grade student participates in History Day. This year's topic was triumph and tragedy, so really, students get to spend a lot of time becoming experts on a topic. They research at school, outside of school, by taking a field trip to Wilson Library. And then in February, they were presented, and students were judged by teachers and other community members. And 35 of our students were selected to move on to regionals. And that took place in March at White Bear Lake High School. And then from regionals, we have nine students that were selected to go to states with three given honorable mentions. So that is so amazing, it's so fun to watch and to see students present on their topics. And so state is May 4th at the University of Minnesota, so we'll be cheering those kiddos on. And then the top entries from state, they get to move on and go to the University of Maryland in June. So fingers crossed that we have some students that we can send there as well.
Have those numbers been increasing, the number of students that we have advancing?
Yeah. Last year, there were three students all in one group.
Yeah.
That was my...
Yeah, exactly. And I think it's really cool, because the options, it used to be only like you could do a board, right? And so the options in which they can have their tool for a presentation have increased as well, which I think has been just more beneficial for students, because they can pick something that's more interesting to them, instead of just doing a board if that's not their area of interest, so. Alright, so we have a couple students here. Do you want to go first? So we have two groups, each of groups only has one of the presenters. So our first presenter is going to be Veronique Kalibe Namaku, and her partner is Fatima Kathem. She couldn't be here today. And then our next presenter is going to be Renal Chessen, and her partner, Iman Ahmed, was unable to be here. But I'm going to hand it over to you, okay? And Ms. Ambler over there, she'll get your video going up, okay? Alright.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
So my project is called The Radium Girls. We did a group documentary. The reason why we chose The Radium Girls, because we didn't really know why you would call a group of people The Radium Girls. So we decided to do more research on it, and we figured out that they were girls being poisoned by radium-laced paint. Yeah. And we chose a documentary, because me, I like editing things and adding pictures and then music. And then my partner, she wanted to try it out, because she's never done video editing before. One of the first radium watch companies was called Waterbury Clock Company, made in 1916 New Jersey. The women there were called The Radium Girls, and they were young workers.
The outbreak of the radium poisoning affected them. The tragedy was they were getting sick and dying. Thanks to the workers' union, the company decided to raise wages by two cents and fix the safety rules, a triumph to the girls.
A few days before Christmas in 1898 in Paris, Marie Curie and her husband Pierre Curie discovered radium. Radium is a radioactive element with atomic number 88 and the symbol Ra. The inventor of radium-laced paint, Dr. Saban A. Von Souchki, died in November 1928. Dr. Saban didn't know the dangers of radium, and he didn't live long enough to be able to tell people how dangerous radium is. Dr. Saban died because he got sick from radium in his hand. Since radium is so hard to get, there are only a couple grams in the world. It was so valuable that it cost $12,000 for a gram. New factories were opening, and they were making glow-in-the-dark watches. The reason for these watches was because of the soldiers. The soldiers need to see the time in the dark to keep track of the time. That's one of the reasons why they started making glow-in-the-dark watches. Another reason was because people also wanted them too. Because of this, the company needed more workers and started hiring more girls. Sooner or later, dial painting became the most paid job in America, making it more appealing to the girls. Most of them didn't even suspect that they were being harmed from putting brushes that had radium-laced paint on it in their mouths. The man that made radium-laced paint was called Dr. Saban A. Von Souchki, but sadly died in November 1928 because of radium poisoning. He died without telling people the dangers of radium paint.
The first watch company officially opened was in New Jersey in 1917. In this company, they were making glow-in-the-dark watches, and to make them glow in the dark, they used radium-laced paint to paint the dials of the watches. The reason they were making watches that needed radium-laced paint was because after the First World War, there was an increased demand for watches, specifically glow-in-the-dark. Since they needed to make a lot of watches to speed up the process, they encouraged lip-dipping. The process of lip-dipping was when they would put the brush in their paint and then put it in their mouth to make the end of the brush pointy. This process caused most girls to get radium poisoning, which could be in the knee or jaw, which caused them to die. The girls were mostly affected because nobody but the girls ever touched the paint or came close to it without wearing gear to protect them. Also because the employers encouraged lip-dipping, making them ingest radium. The girls were involved with tragedy, because the girls were getting sick and getting radium poisoning, not knowing why, and they didn't even know they were getting radium poisoning. Most girls got radium poisoning, and they didn't know until after they got radium poisoning. The triumph was that the girls sued the company multiple times, and in the end, won their cases in court. After all the deaths and sicknesses, the company decided to cut the workers' compensation from five years to three years, which wasn't fair for the girls. The company didn't even notify the workers. Since radium poisoning takes time to actually notice it, by the time the three years were up and they got radium poisoning, workers' compensation won't cover hospital stays. Because of that, five workers, Grace Friar, Catherine Schwab, Quinta McDonald, Alina Larisse, and Edna Hussman, filed five suits against the United States Radium Corporation for a total of $1,250,000.
After many years, The Radium Girls had an impact on a few laws. One of the laws was that an employer can't get workers sick, which was a situation for the girls. Because of this, it became part of a factory rule in lots of places, making it safer for workers that work with dangerous chemicals. Also, another thing The Radium Girls impacted was the Manhattan Project. The Manhattan Project's main priority is to protect the workers from hazards of atomic energy.
Alright, Renal, you ready?
Very impressive.
Hi. So, our topic is Jesse Owens, and this wasn't our first choice. Our first choice was Title IX, but we couldn't find the right information about that topic, so we went to Jesse Owens. And it took interest in us. And the reason why we chose this topic was because we need more African-Americans in our history. And it feels like Jesse Owens is underestimated, because every time someone brings up African-American history, you're going to hear Martin Luther King, or Nelson Mandela, or Rosa Parks. But personally, I think why we chose this topic was to bring him out more, so his name could be heard more. And so, when people bring up African-American history, you're going to say his name. So, this is our website, and we chose these colors just to match the theme. And Jesse Owens was an African-American trackrunner. And the triumph was that he was really good in the sport he was doing. But the tragedy was he was getting discriminated for no reason, like he was getting discriminated for just being good at what he was doing. He was being discriminated for being the best in his league, and he was like, he was like one of the only African-Americans, and he was like the first, like in all the races he was doing. He always got first, and Hitler wasn't happy about that, and he always used to get discriminated for it. So that's the real tragedy, and, yeah. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, that is all we have for you tonight. Is there any questions, either the students or for us?
Yeah, I'm just really happy to see the success of the changes that have been made at the middle school. I know that's been a really challenging process, and it's been something that our community has shared a lot of concern about in the past, and just thrilled with the creativity and how you guys have worked to make changes and that they're working.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
Thanks. Yeah, we are, yes, the fifth-grade teachers are absolutely on board with that. So we are on board too, and again, I think it'll be an easy transition for the fall. We have like a binder system where they can purchase or not purchase them on fee-pay, all binder together, so it's also very convenient for families to not have to go out and pick up all the pieces. It's really convenient, so.
So everybody be organized.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we move on to business action items, beginning with the resolution for accepting gifts. Every month, we're fortunate that we have a community that sponsors and gives gifts to the school district. And in this month, donating to the Fridley Transition Program for a total of $25 are Kenneth and Beverly Vicken. Donating to Stevenson Elementary is the Fridley American Legion, donating school supplies for the teachers. Do I have a motion to accept the gifts and thank these donors for their contributions? I have a motion by Stark, seconded by Thornton, to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions. Any further discussion? If not, clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Adams? Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Peredo?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And the resolution passes, thank you. Next up, we also have a resolution to terminate and non-renew the employment of certain non-tenured probationary teachers. This, every year, we do have, this motion comes before us, where we have teachers that may be for various different reasons, either that they were late hires or are non-probationary, that we will, it's been our standard practice to non-renew their licenses. That's not to say that they won't, you won't see them in our buildings next year, it's just that we, it's just a process that we always go through every year. With that, do I have a motion to, for the resolution to terminate and non-renew the employment of these folks?
Second.
I have a motion by Adams, seconded by Peredo, to approve the resolution to terminate and non-renew the teaching contracts of certain non-tenured probationary teachers for 2019, 20. And then there's a number of them, and I don't believe I will read those individual names. Any further discussion? If not, clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Adams?
Aye.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Peredo?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. And these folks will be notified via a letter of this, though I believe probably most of them already have been talked to with regards to it, so I won't be surprised to them. Our next item for business action item will be a second reading and adoption of policies, beginning with Policy 533, Ms. Oftedal.
Board Chair Riddle, Board Members, Superintendent Heil, I present the Wellness Policy, Policy 533, for its second reading, as it aligns with the Healthy and Hungry Children's Act.
Thank you, and there were no changes over the last month on that, I believe? If not, we have a number of other policies, Dr. Heil.
Yes, did you want to do Policy 202 update?
Sure, I can do 202, yeah. Was the, Policy 202 is the school board officers, over the last month, there have just been one change with regards to both the clerk position and the treasurer position, denoting that we can designate a staff member to solve some, or to handle some of the role, with making sure that the reports, both financial and statutory reports that need to be done and filed on time, to do that for us on our behalf.
Thank you, and I'll share in regards to second readings for Policy 203, 203.2, and 203.2P. There were no changes since the first reading.
Thank you, with that, do I have a motion to approve and accept the second reading and adoption of Policies 533, 202, 203, 203.2, and 203.2P?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Peredo, seconded by Thornton, to accept the second reading and adoption of the policies aforementioned. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we move on to our consent agenda, that's the routine action items, including the minutes of our regular school board meeting and work session that was held March 19th, our monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absence, termination, resignations, and retirements, the health insurance bid for the July 1st to 2019 through June 30th, 2021, the Metropolitan Regional Arts Council grant of $5,000 that was awarded for the summer production of Year in Town by the Fridley Community Theater. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Thornton, seconded by Delvo, to approve the consent agenda of the items previously mentioned. One of those things, we do have, Ms. Oftedal has announced her retirement, I should say, beginning at the end of the year, and so we certainly wish her good luck. beginning at the end of the year, and so we certainly wish her good luck in her future endeavors. With that, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Moving on to a written information, Dr. Hile on student enrollment.
Thank you, Chair Riddle. In regards to student enrollment for the month of March, we did see some growth in both of our elementary schools, and we were stable in our middle school and a small amount of growth in our high school. So, that was very nice to see.
Thank you. Now, we move into first reading of several policies. Ms. Oftedal?
Yes, I submit for its first reading the revision of five twenty-four Internet acceptable use and safety policy. This is one of the policies we review each year, making sure we're kept up to date. In this revision, we're looking at three areas of change. One, aligning the policy with our bullying prohibition policy, indicating that no, none of our internets, our services could, are, can be used to participate in cyberbullying. Other changes are to bring it in alignment with the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act, protecting student data, identifying what student data can be shared online and moved through email. And finally, it includes a procedural document to align social media guidelines for employees. I submit it for its first reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, several other policies, beginning with eight oh six crisis management. Dr. Hile?
Thank you. Submitting for first reading is policy eight oh six on crisis management. There was just an editing correction that was made on page one. On page six and seven, in area of number four, procedures included in this policy, we did add some procedures to this survey so that we were more in alignment with the MSBA policy. In regards to policy eight oh seven, health and safety policy, on page one, the plans and procedures area was moved to eight oh seven P with the health and safety procedures. On page two, in area four, crisis management plan, that was actually removed from this policy because it's already stated in policy eight oh six as part of our crisis management policy. On page two oh three of this policy, we have some of the items that were originally listed in policy eight oh seven appendix. We're now gonna be more aligned with MSBA, so now all areas will be listed under programs and plans. And in letter B and F, the language is added from MSBA, as well as number four was included from MSBA as well. And so, policy eight oh seven appendix was removed, and those procedures are now part of the district's health and safety plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the reports from school board members, beginning with the Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting that was held on March twentieth. I, obviously, the board was, attended that one. The biggest thing that's going on with Northwest Suburban at the moment is we have, are bringing on Saint Francis into the collaborative. However, due to some issues with Saint Francis getting up to speed with their achievement integration plan that they have to do for the state, it was a little premature to bring them in. They weren't quite ready to step in right away. So, they were going to come in July first, but we're actually postponing that for an additional year so they can kind of get all their ducks in a row and get it, get it all figured out as to what they want to do and how they will join the collaborative. So, for the time being, they will be on hold, basically at their own request for the most part. Also on that, we were, had a full report on the lottery program for the collaborative. One of the big things that the collaborative is there for is to help move students across inter-district boundaries, be they white students or minority students. It's really to get the students moving for the racially isolation problems that we see across the collaborative. What that affects for Fridley this past year is they generally have, hold a lottery program out there for students wanting to get into the various programs. Obviously, with our magnet program that we have with IB across the entire district, we'll bring in students both at both elementaries, at the middle school, and at the high school for that. So, what happens is the students generally go to a job fair, kind of a situation where they learn about the different magnet school programs. They decide that, no, I would like to go to school A, school B, outside in the collaborative, and then they put their name into a lottery program for that. There is certain waiting that goes on to those students that are in the lottery program, but ultimately then seats are assigned for that. For us in Fridley, we basically looked at, we have about thirty-six students coming in to us, just new students coming across the district from Northwest Suburban districts. So, it's a really nice program to get, get students to move across lines into programming that they're interested in, so it's a very good program from that. So, it was very successful, I believe, overall. We were moving, excuse me, let me go to that page here. We looked at moving a total of three hundred and twenty-eight new students, I believe, for this school. Excuse me, no, I'm sorry. We are moving, excuse me, nine hundred and fourteen new movements in that. So, when you consider it's a seven district collaborative, it's very, a very popular program, works out really well. Now, those students are actually new movements over it. So, if it was a situation of you're moving, or you're going just from grade to grade, that doesn't count. Even as long as you're moving in the same strand, say, for example, from one of our elementaries in IB to our middle school in IB program, that's not considered a new, you would not have to do as a new lottery for that. You'd be just automatically rolled up as part of our district in there, so. So, we've had quite a bit there. One of the other real exciting things that were talked about was with the partnership program that we have through Rotary. They've done a really nice job with the Rotary folks. And one of the, one of the main Rotary guys, I believe, out in the Buffalo Hanover Montrose district area, he collaborated with some folks, and they donated thirteen telescopes to Northwest Suburban District for use in the multicultural resource center. So, this is a situation where teachers can come along, check those telescopes out, and bring them into their classroom for, for use. It's very popular. You know, students actually can even take these telescopes home at night with them. So, they'll get training on how to use them, take them home, look at the moon, look at the stars with them. It's a very, very cool program. So, they said they've got thirteen for the moment, and they're, he's trying to expand that even farther. So, we certainly thank, thank those folks for doing that.
Nice community partnership.
Yes.
Great.
Next up, we have, we have the Northwest Metro nine sixteen board meeting, held April third.
Yes, just a couple of updates from nine sixteen. They have a new equity coordinator, so she's gonna be, she's gonna be doing a lot of work, which, as a member district, will also benefit from here in Fridley. And they have a number of significant staff changes as well in their organization. One of the things they gave some summary on is their Grow Your Own program, which is an effort, it's a partnership with the University of Minnesota, which they began in two thousand fourteen as a way to try and grow their own special education teachers. So, they, students while they're in school, they get some school credit for working at nine sixteen, so they get like on-the-job, they get credit for the on-the-job training. And so, that speeds up the amount of time they have to be in school so they can actually get them into classrooms. And they're, they just reviewed some of their data over the past several years. Of the students that have participated, they've had nine hundred and sixteen employees across twelve districts. They have an eighty-six percent retention rate for the teachers, the employees who have gone through that to become special education teachers. Forty have graduated in the program since two thousand sixteen. Eighteen percent have been people of color. And they are in the process of a new partnership with the University of Saint Thomas, specifically focused on the ABS licensure and the EBD program licensure. And that, again, is available as a member district if we have stu, if we have, I keep saying students. If we have staff who are interested in getting those licensures, that's an option for them. So, they're working on how much time can they get credited for their actual on-the-job training. So, another benefit of being a member of that district. I did also have the opportunity, District nine sixteen sends two board members to the National School Board Association Conference each year, and I had the opportunity to attend. And really, some great presentations, trying to better connect the shortage of employees in our workforce and the gap in skills of what employers are saying they need from our schools so that the students coming out of our K through twelve system are prepared for the workforce today, which has changed dramatically over the last ten years in particular. So, some really valuable information, which I won't go in, we talked about in the work session, but trying to better connect that school-to-employer, school-to-workforce connection, and employers are very interested in partnering. So, if we have any employers that want to partner with our district on how can we better meet those needs, that would be much appreciated. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Associate Metropolitan School District's AMSD Board Meeting, held April twelfth. Dr. Hile?
Thank you. At the AMSD Board Member Meeting, we had Dr. David Heistad presented. He's Executive Director of Research Evaluation and Assessments for Bloomington Schools, and he provided information on the screening tools that are available to help students with dyslexia. Key symptoms of students with dyslexia covers problems with decoding words, sight word recognition, part reading fluency. And the tools that he provided are actually tools that are addressed in the current Minnesota kindergarten standards. And at Fridley as well, here, we do cover those standards, and it was just important to make sure in the younger grades to get those students assessed so they get the help that they need as soon as possible. There was also a legislative session update that was shared. So, the House and Senate released their budget targets last week. The House increased spending for E through twelve education by nine hundred million dollars, which they are proposing a three percent increase in the first year on the budget, and then two percent the second year. The Senate presented their proposed budget, and that was for two hundred and seven million dollars were their target. And right now, they're looking at point five percent over the next two years. And then, of course, we have the governor's overall budget at seven hundred and nineteen million. So, it'll be interesting how this all shakes out over the next few weeks. And the last thing, we had a presentation by Carolyn Zacherson. She's a special ed teacher from Minneapolis, and she just shared how to work and increase your third-party billing by making sure you're looking at concerns around duplicate or missing Medicaid numbers for students because that can impact districts greatly with their budgets. But I am very thrilled to say we have a very competent person in our district working on that, and we don't have that issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. For a final report this evening from school board members will be Ms. Thornton on Schools for Equity and Education.
Thanks, Chris. So, at that CE meeting, we had a couple of speakers do presentations. The first was Kent Peckel. He is the President and CEO of Search Institute, which is an internationally recognized non-for-profit organization that conducts applied research and develops practical resources that enhance the capacity of schools, youth programs within the community. Very good presentation, talked about not only is there an achievement gap, but also there's a developmental relationship gap that is also a huge piece and needs to be taken into consideration. And he's talked about there are five elements of that developmental relationship. Going through them briefly here, the first one is to express care and show that the kid, the child, that they matter. That goes a long way. The second one was to challenge their growth, push them to always feel like they can do better and succeed. The third one was to provide support to help them complete tasks and achieve their goals and to keep moving and progressing from there. The fourth one was to share the power, keep, treat kids with respect, and give them a say into their learning, which goes a long way. And five is to expand possibilities, connect with people that broaden their world. So, which is very, very, very important. It could help improve their self-confidence and better their GPA. So, yeah, that was very good. The second one was, we had Jennifer Bertram. She was with the Minnesota Children's Defense Fund, which educates Minnesota about the needs of children and encourages preventative investments before kids get sick or drop out of school and get in trouble or suffer any type of family breakdown. The policy recommendations for that was to fully fund and forecast a childcare assistance program. Another one, big one, was to expand reach of the school-linked mental health programs, which is very, very crucial. And the governor's budget is to increase that funding to take one thousand families off of that waitlist so services can begin. So, hopefully, get some progress there. Thank you.
Thank you, and you didn't want to toot your horn here, but we want to.
No, I don't.
Congratulations. We understand you were elected. Now, as the President for the CE group?
President-elect, thank you, Chris. I appreciate that. I don't want to do harm, but thank you very much. Thank you.
Alright, with that, we'll move on to important, future school board dates. The next Northeast Metro nine sixteen board meeting will be held May first at the Bel Air School at six PM. AMSD Board Meeting, May third, at the Cora Education Center at seven AM. The next Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting will be held May fifteenth at their offices at six fifteen PM. And our next Fridley Public School Board Meeting will be May twenty-first, work session beginning at five thirty, open forum at seven PM, and the business meeting at seven thirty here at the Fridley Community Center.
Excuse me, Chair Riddle, may I comment on something?
Absolutely.
This past Saturday, there was an exceptional partnership with Alina Health with Stevenson Elementary. They gave out over four hundred bikes to family members, and it's like all family members, from the small to the medium to the adult, and they were fitted with helmets. And after they received their bikes, they were, even went through a room where it was fitted to make sure that it worked. And so, Alina Health has done this in the past two years, I believe, as well with Haze. So, I just wanted to thank them for that partnership. It was just beautiful to see, so.
Thank you, and thank you to Alina for that. Again, it's just the outpouring from our community is wonderful to see, to be part of this community, so. With that, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Sub moved.
Second.
A motion by Adam to adjourn the meeting, and seconded by Thornton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at eight nineteen.